Good evening, everybody. My name's Dean Veneman. It's the meeting of committee of the whole of the Wisconsin Rapids Common Council. Public may listen to the -- we're starting a little late, by the way. Public may listen to the meeting by calling 1-312-626-6799. There's an access code and meetings also being streamed on the city's Facebook page and is available on the Community Media's YouTube page. It can be accessed at WR-CM.org. So we'll call the meeting to order and do a quick go around the room, starting with Tim.
I'm Sorese, Finance Director.
Shane Blazer, Mayor.
Jay Bemke, District Eight.
Patrick Delaney, District Seven.
Dennis Pollack, District Six.
Sherri Evenson, District Five.
Matt Zachary, District Three.
Dean Veneman, District Two, Council President.
Ryan Austin, District One.
Jennifer Gassick, City Clerk.
So all are present except Tom Rehome. I might be running late because he was at a meeting. So basically, just a few words before we get this going. First of all, thanks to Tim Sorese, department heads and staff for putting together some of this information that traditionally was put together a little later in the past. And it's one of the goals that I know I had and several members of the council had is to try to get a handle on the budget process a little earlier in the year. And this is very helpful in that regard, them putting that together for us. So I think, you know, having this process going as early as possible so we can start moving forward, try to attempt to balance this budget by ultimately decreasing, if not completely eliminating, the process of borrowing to manage our day-to-day business. But that's what I see the purpose of this meeting is just to get a -- give the entire council a forum where they can chime in on the budget process, what needs to be improved in it, how we might be able to move these things a little forward a little earlier so we have a better handle on it come in the fourth quarter when we're -- when metal meets the road, if you will, and how we can best manage these assets that belong to our citizens. And so, that being said, I think this is kind of an informal discussion today and I guess we're just looking for specific thoughts and if you have questions of Tim here today, of anything, questions of each other. And I think we just want to get a discussion as to see where we stand on this budget that's been prepared by everybody. So actually, I'm just leaving it out too. Somebody wants to go ahead and ask any questions or bring up any thoughts, feel free to be the first one to start. Sherri?
Thank you. One quick question. I know in Public Works, we have the capital improvement plan. And does every department have a capital improvement plan? Like, does the Parks Department set? I don't recall seeing a lot of those. And I think it'd be very helpful if we had capital improvements instead of running behind the ball all the time, if we had, you know, living paycheck to paycheck as we are. If we had capital improvement plans that identified what our goals are. Like I said, I know Public Works has one, but it'd be very helpful if all departments had one. Is that a thing or ...? Thank you.
Well, that's the whole thing about the -- we've discussed about it in the past for a number of years, having a comprehensive capital improvements plan. And a capital improvements plan isn't just a list of projects that, okay, this is what needs to be done. You know, it's also, okay, you know, this is what, you know, these are the items that are out there. How do we prioritize them and how are they going to be funded? You know, I think we've done a good job in the Public Works of identifying projects that are out there, but there's also building improvements that need to be incorporated in that. We do have each department, specifically streets, fire, police, you know, IT. You know, we have replacement accounts, you know, for computers, for street equipment. You know, we put money aside each year. And basically, one of the goals is, is that we need to draw that all into, you know, a comprehensive one because it isn't just about segmenting Public Works, IT, fire, street, police. They all have their needs, right? But what you need to do is like, when you analyze them in a vacuum, they all look good, right? It's like, obviously, it's a need. But what you really need to do is you need to look at them as a whole and prioritize as a city, you know, what, where the funding goes. Because we have limited funding, you know? If we had unlimited funding, that'd be okay. But it's going to that next step of like, okay, these are all our needs out there. How are we going to fund those? And that's what we're really trying to work to. And that's where I think as a city, you know, we're lacking is that comprehensive, getting everything on one page so that you as a governing body and the citizens, the taxpayers can look at this and say, okay, here's all our needs out here, but here's our funding levels and these are the priorities that we're addressing. And it's really updating that each year and developing that process. It's like, because I really look at it, capital improvements isn't just about putting, you know, items on a page. It's a process where each year you update it, you look at it, you reprioritize. Because, you know, what was a priority last year isn't a priority this year or could be a priority the following year. And I think that's what we really need to strive towards.
Thank you. I think you're what you're kind of, the strategic planning database, strategic planning, capital improvement. And I get it as a whole, not that we're micromanagers, but when we have a huge facility such as the water park or, you know, different things that we can make revenue on, it's interesting to see, you know, okay, what are we spending money on parks? Yes, they're important for enjoyment and this and that, but, you know, okay, do we need streets first? You know, I mean, those kinds of things. So I think it's helpful, as I said, I've seen the Public Works ones where, you know, the projects that are laid out so we kind of know. But it's like, one thing with the city is I never knew was where are we going? I mean, it's like we spin our wheels every year just trying to keep up. And it's like, it'd be nice to see, okay, what is the envision of the Finance Department? Are you going to need new software in three years or four years? You know, we don't see it until it comes up on, you know, kind of as a line item on a budget, but we don't know what that really is. Not that we need to micromanage, I'm not trying to say that, but if we see things like that, I think it's very helpful is, oh, okay, you know, their computers are 50 years old or, you know, or something like that. So that's just where I was kind of going with that. So thank you.
Yeah, I agree, Sherri, to build on it even further. We recently had some software installed from Janesville. They have a capital improvements, they developed software. And so we've installed that into our system to start building that capital improvements. But ideally, we'd like to have a meeting in May and kind of go through that list. So when it comes to budget time, it's already been done. But we're not there yet. There's ways to go. But yeah, that's the ultimate end goal, to make it easier for budgeting.
I was reading the...
Yep, I read the same article, too.
For free, and I just thought that, wow.
And if you ever want to go out, Marshfield's got a very detailed one on their website. And so if you ever want to look at one, but that's our goal to get to.
And I think that would be awesome just from reading it. I hope all you guys read the municipality magazine that's in there about budget stuff. And there's a lot of good stuff on there. And I mean, for department heads to see it, we can go out and see it, citizens can go out, I mean, it, wow. That was incredible.
Yeah, it should be on the website. And Water and Light does that. They have a one-year, five-year, and all the way out, and that's where we need to get to also.
Just a question, what you said, so you said you get some software from Janesville. Is that like a shared city?
Well, yeah, they developed a software and they had a presentation and anybody that wanted to have that software, they gave it to us, any municipality. But it's now it's trying to learn it and build on it and we're working with Joe, you know, and IT Department and, but it takes time. It's just not fast enough as we want.
So how do we, other than the municipal magazines, how do we find out like that Janesville, for instance, is using that as an example, is willing to share? Because software's an expensive application, so.
Well, actually, this was through the league and the Janesville IT Department along with their administrator's office developed this over time. And they've been working at it for a number of years because, you know, when we, there's a number of people from the city that sat in on the presentation that they gave and they had been struggling. It's like, you know, there's no, you know, cookie cutter software out there that does it. And so basically, they developed this internally and, you know, and they found it worked very well. And they're basically offering it to any municipality that wants it for free and, you know, they were very open about, hey, once you get it, if you have your questions or whatever. And so, you know, when we saw this come through, we're like, hey, this is something that, you know, where you struggle with, you know, it's standardizing where there's, you know, everyone, every department can put, you know, stuff in that's the same input, you know, because a lot of times it's about, you can have Excel spreadsheets, this, that, everyone does it differently and then, you know, who's going to sit there and coordinate and try to customize all this and, you know, come up with a good document. So I think this is a good start and I think that once we reviewed it, we're like, you know, we can install it for free and we can see and, you know, if it's going to work for us, we can tweak it the way we want. And I think it's a good start, but ultimately, I think it's, you know, it's really putting together an internal team, you know? It's just not one person doing this. It's a team of key individuals and it's developing a process so that, you know, once you kind of get it going, and like I've said this before, is that, you know, you have this process where, you know, each year you have new requests because, you know, like I said, you can look at a five-year window, but one year from now, that can all change. But that's part of the process. Each year you're updating it, priorities change over time, you know? And it's really bringing it, you know, internally, going through that process, reprioritizing, and then bring it to this governing body to look at also, you know, for the citizens, the public to look at. It's a public document, you know, and some municipalities even have a public hearing on it. And so that each year, early in the year, you're updating that. And so everyone's kind of on the same page, it's like, here's what's out there, here's the funding and, you know, and it's also, it's not about what you're funding, but it's also about, you know, communicating, you know, what you're not funding, you know? You know, and so I think it's a good process. I think it's something that, you know, we really need to strive and just dedicate ourselves to doing.
Yeah, well, kudos for them for putting that together and kudos for us for utilizing or at least taking a chance on it. I'm not opposed to anything that's free. Matt?
Since we're talking about the, this project right now, when it comes to the library and the capital improvements project, like, is it possible, I know we talked about it last year, like, to be able to, well, first of all, is it a county-owned library or is it a city-owned library?
It's a city-owned, it's a city staff, city building.
All right. So then...
I don't want to interrupt, but maybe it might be, well, it might benefit since public's watching it, Tim, if you go through that explanation that we just had about how the funding is. I didn't want to interrupt. This would be helpful to our conversation.
Right, I mean, the majority of it, you know, they have three primary funding sources, you know? One, the major one is, you know, the city through the tax levy, you know? And then the second one is the county gives us each year a library aid based on a formula and then obviously their operating revenues, you know? And, you know, and for the county library aid, if we fund at a certain level, then we can, you know, every year, you know, we pass that resolution to exempt city taxpayers from the county library tax because, you know, and that's basically because it's recognized that, you know, city taxpayers, you know, fund the library through this tax levy, city tax levy. And so if we maintain a certain funding level, then we're exempt from that, you know, city taxpayers are exempt from that, from the county tax rate for that amount.
And what's that funding level?
Four to five hundred thousand.
Okay. Go ahead.
So to understand then, they're getting money through the county, they're getting money through the city, and then they have their own revenue.
What am I drawing here?
I guess there's, to me, there's a lot of questions and I know we have to communicate with the library too and see what's going on there.
Mr. Mayor?
And also just to let you know, we do have a new library director starting in August. So, you know, when she gets on board and kind of evaluates, they have some open positions there that they haven't filled. And I think giving her an opportunity to kind of evaluate what's going on over there and seeing what changes she might be bringing forward. And Ryan could probably speak a little bit more better to that.
Hit the nail on the head, Mayor Blazer.
So a further question then, in that sense is, like, are we funding as the city? Are we funding the operations? But then when it comes to like capital improvements to the building, is that built into what we give them as, as, I don't know, Brian, maybe you have the information? Or could capital improvements to the library be put on a separate thing, on our capital improvements for the city and be able to shift money accordingly?
Sure, you know, just a, I found the Wood County Library tax exemption calculation and it's, the appropriation needed for exempt is 335,000. So that's what the city would need to contribute in order to be exempted from the county tax rate. As far as your previous question, capital improvements at the library have been funded primarily through two avenues, or three avenues, I should say. You know, one, they have an endowment that they have, that they control that have been used for improvements over their various natures and that's, they control that. City does not have access to that or any control over that. Also, in their appropriation, when we appropriate money to the library, once we appropriate over to them, it's basically the library board's money. So then they can spend it however they want. And so, you know, if they, you know, whatever's left over at the end of the year, whatever, they retain that. And, you know, over the years, if they've had any surpluses, you know, they put those into some of their building and projects that they've had. Also, for some of their major projects, like their parking lot, their elevator, bathroom renovation, the city has budgeted additional monies to fund those capital improvements because, you know, one, it is a city building and, you know, so in the past, we have done those. So it's kind of a three, you know, prong approach to how those, some of those capital improvements get funded.
So the overall budget most likely is beyond the two-point, I think it's about 2.3 million is kind of what they're saying, but with endowments and other money that's coming their way, it's, it seems to be a lot, a lot more money that's going into the library every year.
Right, and, you know, the endowment obviously has left bequests of various natures and a lot of times those are used for, you know, it's, you know, it's one-time money, obviously, right? You know, so, you know, they tend not to use those for operations because if all of a sudden you put them to the operations, eventually you're going to exhaust those funds. You know, so they tend to use those for programming or improvements. I know, well, the major renovation, and you can probably speak to this, Ryan, at the library, a lot of that is being funded through one donation, but also through the endowment, correct?
Yeah, correct. It's money with strings attached. So it's donated money, but they are giving you direction and what it can be used for.
Okay.
But, so if I understand it then, in theory then, the money that we appropriate, appropriate or we don't really have direction, what it could be used for, once we've decided on it, the direction comes, once we've decided on that appropriation based on the library coming to us and telling us what they need.
Correct. The library board governs what happens to those funds once they receive them. But again, you know, we have a city council representative on that board, county, a county board representative on that board as well. So the best interests of those entities are in place as well with those, that representation.
So I understand it then. So the projected budget of over two-point or 2.05, technically, all, to be exempt, we just need 335,000 of that. The rest is what we appropriated traditionally, you know?
According to the formula, yes.
Yeah, and so that's, okay.
Like, don't get me wrong either, like, to everybody in the city that's listening right now, like, we all know this is a touchy subject and I've certainly got the enjoyment of getting, you know, stuff thrown at me just because we're talking about it. But I think it definitely needs to be talked about as well as the citywide budget needs to be talked about. So I think that it's a good thing. So I don't have any other questions on that right now, but I would jump into asking, you know, would it be better, again, we're not, we're not, our job is not to micromanage the budget as far as I understand. So would it be better if we were to come up with a list of parameters, general parameters that would allow us to, you know, try to put some kind of, I think the ultimate goal, at least for me, is, and I know this isn't the same for everybody, is to try to get down on our debt to back it off to the place where we're in a better position. The sooner the better. And I think right now it seems like we're gonna, we're just gonna go along with the model of let's just keep chipping away at it with the payments we're making every year and eventually it'll go away. But it seems to me like it just keeps, with that philosophy, it just keeps growing and growing and we get to the point of we're in trouble now. And I think we've heard that even from the gentleman that we're borrowing money from or he's our, he's our in-between guy that, you know, we're not in a good position anymore. So, that being said, I feel like the overall goal is to put us in a stronger financial position, as sooner the better. So if we do that, the goal I feel like would be to not take out any more debt or at least reduce the amount of debt that we're going to take out. And can we just put a parameter in there that says, this year, we're not going to take out more than a million dollars in debt? We got to figure everything else out, we got to work it into the budget and figure things out and be able to whittle that down to the point where we can pay off this debt faster and get us away from the edge that we're at right now?
Well, I mean, I, you know, I, I'll kind of disagree with you and, you know, I think that you're, you know, when Phil Cosson from Ellers was here, I don't think he was saying that we're in a financial situation here with our debt, you know? When you actually look at comparable municipalities, we're one of the lower as far as our debt level. Now, you know, and I say that just as a thing because, you know, every municipality's different, every community's different. So I always caution, it's like, you know, you just can't just say, well, you know, that community does it, so why aren't we there? Because every situation's different, priorities are different. You know, as far as, you know, the amount of debt that we're, you know, and I think we're really talking about the debt that we use to fund our street construction, is that correct? You know, is that?
Normally, we start out with that, but we usually tack on a couple extra, you know?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, yeah, as far as, you know, like, over the past, you know, four years, yeah, we've added considerable debt for the Aquatic Center, to the tune of nine million plus, the fire station renovation and then obviously, you know, the East River Bank. You know, when you really look at what we, you know, historically, what's, I'll say was like, kind of, when we look at it from a budgetary standpoint, what's really, you know, from a funding standpoint, what, you know, the debt proceeds that are, you know, kind of like, I say, baked into the pie, so to speak, in the budget, is really what we borrow for streets. You know, historically, the city has borrowed for those street constructions going back, I don't know how many years. And, and so when you really look at what we're borrowing for streets, when you look at your 28 million, only 31% of that is really dedicated that what we borrow for streets. You know, our outstanding debt for street construction, which we budget for in annually in the budget, is 8.7 million, not, when you look at our total outstanding debt of 28 million, only 8.7 is dedicated to that streets. That's really part of the, you know, structure of the budget. So, you know, the other, I was going to go through what we borrow for the past is, you know, when you look at aquatics, you know, that represents 30% of that debt. Centralia Center is actually coming off now, so it only represents 3.3%. Pension back in 2003, it's only 1.5, but we had borrowed to refinance our pension liability. And basically what that was, was there was a pension liability at the Wisconsin Retirement System and they're basically charging you additional rates on your normal contribution rates to fund that. But basically, when you looked at what that was set at, it was, one, it was 8% interest and, two, the amortization schedule on it was like 40 years and you were like basically never going to pay it off. So basically, what most municipalities did is they issued taxable bonds to pay that off and it actually saved you money in the long run because you're paying it down as opposed to, if we wouldn't have, we'd be paying additional contribution rates in our WRS probably going forward for another 20 years. Those are almost off the books. Part of that 14.1% was the Water and Light issued electric revenue bonds. I'm not going to say back and, I can't remember when it was, but when interest rates for bonds came down, they had a refinancing opportunity. The city, they came to the city, says, hey, will you issue general obligation refunding bonds to, you know, refinance these? And when we looked at it, just from a cash flow, I think it saved a million dollars over the life, rest of the life of the bonds. But they, you know, even though it's part of our general obligation outstanding debt, you know, obviously, we bill them for the principal and interest payments. So for, to the taxpayers, not the, you know, for the debt service tax levy, it's a zero effect, but that, you know, but that's baked into, you know, $4 million into that 28 million. And then obviously, we had the East River Bank, Phase One, Phase Two. Right now, there's about 2.1 million outstanding on that. And then we have others of 3 million and basically that is the fire station renovation. So, but those are discretionary projects that we take on and decide, really, when you're looking at from the budget and, you know, saying, okay, we need to balance the budget, it's really just looking at that street portion and the amount that is structurally built into the budget, so to speak.
Your Honor?
Matt, I'm going to disagree a little bit too with, you know, the word micromanagement is thrown around a little bit and the greatest amount of power and responsibility the council has is the budget. This is where you set the parameters of what departments can spend. So it's, it's not micromanaging, in my opinion, but it's the fiduciary responsibility of the council. And this is that one time where the most power of the aid comes into play, is determining budgets and determining size of budgets and setting those boundaries and limits. So this is that time and it's the one time where you can.
Patrick?
I have three things here. Since we were just talking about the library, isn't appropriation, isn't that what is supposed to be appropriate funds for them to operate? Isn't that what an appropriation is?
Right, basically appropriation is meaning you're appropriating the funds for the purpose of running a library. I mean, I know what you're saying.
Okay, so you're saying that we're spending $2 million. Now, does some of that come, some of that $2 million come from the county portion of it as well? Because between, okay, go ahead.
Sure, I got it right here. You know, so they're appropriating, you know, the budget appropriation for 2022 was 2,700,000, some change. You know, of that, 642,581 was the Wood County Library Aid. Property taxes was 1,290,745 and the difference was their operating revenues, which is things like book fines, photocopy income, lost books, coffee house revenue and things like that.
Okay, so it's not the difference between the 2 million and the 335,000? It would be the difference between 2 million minus the 642,000 and then the 335,000?
Right, the 335 is just what, is the minimum that we would have to appropriate in order to be exempted, the city taxpayers being exempted from the county library tax. That's a calculation that is done by the county.
Okay, and then in, now, you can answer it or not, but in your opinion, should this be a county library? be a county library as a part of a federated county library system? Or do you think it should remain as a city library?
My personal opinion or?
Personal opinion.
I'll, I'll do as both. I mean, you know, I mean, you know, one of the things that is a challenge when you're a municipality surrounded by townships is that the city offers a lot of community service, not just city service, but community that everyone can participate in. And, you know, and so I think a lot of things should be funded at a higher level because, just because the city, I mean, okay, let's, let's take for example our park system. You know, we have a nice park system, we invest in it, you know, and, but anyone can use them in the surrounding area, right? Whether you're from Grand Rapids or whatever, I mean, Grand Rapids, I don't even, I think their, their park system is Lake Wazicha, which is funded by the county. So, you know, when I look at that, yeah, philosophically, you know, yeah, it is, you know, it is a problem. This has been discussed over years and years and years as far as, you know, the tax disparity between cities and townships because the cities have to, you know, offer a lot of the services that the, the surrounding community uses. Uh, you know, another one would be, you know, like the Lowell Center and things like that, that, you know, we're funding that, but anyone can participate and go to that, correct? So, you know, that's the thing. And then, you know, and I know the League of Miss, Wisconsin municipalities have, have talked about this and things like that. It's, you know, they call it the double whammy, you know, that we pay for a police force in the city, but we also pay for sheriffs, county sheriffs through the county tax and things like that. So, you know, yeah, it, it is a problem, it's been identified, but you know, there's never been at the state level, there's been no resolution to that, just because, you know, there's a lot of politics involved in it.
But the city can disassociate with the library and make it a county library.
I don't know what the legalities on that, I, I couldn't tell you.
On, uh, onto my other questions. Uh, first of all, thanks for putting together this preliminary budget that we have here. Um, and at the top I had seen that there were some things that were left out because they needed to be, um, they were not included because they have no impact or they're legally committed. Is there any other part of this budget that is a must, that has to be paid?
Well, yeah, I mean, so, you know, in the, the, the projection, I included the ones that really affect, you know, the tax levy, the general tax levy and then obviously, you know, any, any debt proceeds or any other funding sources, you have state aids and things like that. The ones I left out were, you know, that service fund because you're really obligated to that, you know, it's, you, you've, you've obligated to pay that debt service. So, you, you know, the council can't reduce, you know, the debt service. We're not gonna default on a bond payment, correct?
Mm-hmm.
You know, the room tax by ordinance, you know, 70% of that goes to the Visitors Conventions Bureau, 18.75, I think, goes to economic development and the rest of it goes to park outlet. So, I mean, I'm not saying that we couldn't buy ordinance, change that to, to fund something else, but you know, those are going to, to city purposes and I just kinda left it out just because, you know, it's, it's set by ordinance. Grants and donations funds, obviously if we get a grant designated for a certain purpose, you know, this, the, you know, the, the council doesn't have the authority to say, well, we're gonna repurpose that something else. It's, you wanna keep that, you know, the intention of the grant or donation. Mass transit fund, um, majority of that is funded through state and federal revenues and we're obligated obviously to have our local share. So if we were to reduce that, obviously then we would put in jeopardy the whole mass transit program and so that's why I left that out. The Capitol Projects Fund, that was one is because that's funded by those special projects. So what's been funded through there is the construction of the Aquatic Center, East River Bank, fire renovations. So, you know, basically for 2023, I don't anticipate anything being budgeted additional in that fund at this time. Uh, obviously the tax incremental districts, you know, all the increment that's generating those districts has to be used for, in that district, either to pay for projects that are identified in the TIF project plan or the debt service or to support, pay the debt service that was taken out for any improvements in there. And then the municipal building improvement fund is, we're currently, the funds that are in there are basically ones that have been carried over from year over year, there's no new money budget in there at this time. And then the sewer utility fee because that's just a different funding source and a different, and it's an enterprise fund, so.
Okay.
Otherwise, everything else is included in the projection and that's why I left it out, just to kinda make it a little bit, you know, to focus in on, you know, really what we could change without.
Okay, so everything that is in there is something that we could change. So under, like we are under contract with the fire department, I don't have any plans on making any changes there, but what you're saying is, is we could change their budget? Is, that's what you're saying?
Correct, yes.
Okay. Um, this is my last question. With the mill shut down and with their facilities being down, um, is that gonna affect the tax income and the equalized value of Wisconsin Rapids and if so, how much?
Yeah, I mean, I betcha at some point, you know, right now it's, you know, it's, it's being assessed, you know, it's always the first of the year. So for the 2023 budget, you know, the assessment at the first of the year, now if all of a sudden it, it gets to a point where they're gonna kinda, uh, you know, raise the, the facility, yeah, then it would be. And we're talking about approximately, I think, the assessed value and this is all their properties is about 65 million dollars. So I had that calculation, you remember what it was per, I think it was like, the, the tax effect in, it would be about 13 to 15 dollars on a hundred thousand dollar house if that 65 million dollars were to evaporate.
Speaking with the assessors, as long as there's property and buildings there, there's assessed value. All the equipment has been exempt through manufacturing, but, but yeah, should, should the buildings be gone, then there would definitely be a reduction in what we'd see in, in uh, tax collection, but the property will still have value considerably less though.
No, we haven't had any problems getting paid for that at all, everything's been all up to date. All right, great, thanks.
Well, in addition to, it's like, you know, obviously with real property, you know, i- if they, they were to be delinquent on it, the county assumes that and then we get reimbursed for that. But obviously you get to that point where, you know, it's, it's really when they, you know, if it comes to the point of where they're gonna, you know, scrap out the facility, that's when we would see that reduction in assessed value, where it would have an effect on, you know, our, our tax rate potentially.
Jury?
Thank you. Um, just a few questions. Um, ARPA funds and the transportation fund Corona or coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery funds, which was part of ARPA. Um, what's going on with that and is there anything? I know you wouldn't use that to build something, but I mean, is there any money that we can use in this budget for roads? I mean, that's number one infrastructure right now, so.
Yep, yeah, I mean, right now, you know, it's, we have about 1.2 million dollars of unspent ARPA funds that, you know, you know, and I've talked to the mayor about this and I think that's gonna be kind of the, you know, as we, it'll parallel this 2023 budget. You know, if you remember, if you're saying we have till the end of 2024 to expend those or to actually obligate it, end of 2025 to spend them. So, you know, kinda through the budget process as we go, kinda looking at those things, you know, I, obviously we're identifying some, some building issues that potentially and some road issues. So, you know, I think as part as we get into the budget discussion, it's gonna, that ARPA funds will kinda parallel that discussion as we start looking at some of our priorities.
Were there any separate infrastructure funds obtained in that second bill, the federal bill?
The infrastructure, um, basically, and Joe Ickes, I can speak to this more, uh, they're basically funding it through the STP Urban Grant Program, which still requires a 20% match locally. So even though the state.
The state funded their 80%.
Paid their 80%. The city still has to come up with the 20%, which I.
And they didn't allocate any funds for us for that.
Figures. Um, hang on a second.
I know that there, we had three projects in the pipeline for that STP Urban that we submitted in October of last year, I do believe, and none of them were selected for the first round of the STP Urban, but that still comes, obviously that comes with a price tag of.
20%.
20% and the one thing about that 20% is, is that's all contract work that unless it's the water and sewer infrastructure, we can't use our own crews on that, so it's.
So even in the long run, even if we had to pay the 20%, if we had to fund it 100%, it's still cheaper?
Yep.
Yeah, and I, and I think Joe Ickes had talked about doing some analysis of, you know.
This winter he's gonna do it.
Do it locally as opposed to state-led project, you know, what's the cost difference? And a lot of times, so.
Yeah, you'd have to find the.
Cause Jackson Street's one of those where we paid the 20% and so he's gonna sit down this winter and, um, and also with Grand Avenue and see if it would have just been cheaper if we would have just done it, paid it ourselves, which would have been less than our 20%. So you can see there's a little inflated rate in there going through the state to do it.
And also on those STP Urban grants, is the state locks in their 80%. If there's cost overruns, it falls on the local.
Yeah. Um, in the budget expenditures, which is what, the second page, so just line item by line item, okay, mayor, human resources, finance, um, some of those other ones. So the change went up. Now, I'm assuming that's because of, um, the, the raises that we, that we allocated to staff.
Mm-hmm.
Um, but then when I get to, okay, public safety, I see the engineering department is 20,000 less, street administration 43, I mean, obviously I say the public works director is out, but 42, almost 40, well, 42.6 in street administration, it seems like the street or the public work stuff is gone way down. Why?
Uh, for the public works director position, we allocated that to various budget accounts. So it wasn't just the public works, we allocated some to the street administration, engineering, park and wastewater.
Cause I'm just thinking that, so the public works director is 52,000, that was just for that, but then allocated obviously for engineering streets, but if I'm adding all that up, it just seemed more than what his wage was. So I was just wondering why.
Sure, or other person?
Yep.
Also, um, as part of the calculation behind the scenes on this, I had to calculate a new incidental labor rate, you know, that takes into account all the paid time off, benefits and things like that, and we had a reduction in incidental labor. So also factored in there is that we had a incidental labor rate that dropped that I estimate for 2023 budget. So then that would also reduce because the incidental labor rate affects just the, the cost system type departments, that being street, engineering, park and wastewater. So that's, this is the distribution of the benefits because they charge at various budgetary accounts, so, and that would be, account for some of the reduction too.
Okay, and then, um, trying to think, I can't, I had it highlighted, but I lost it. Um, and I was just kinda surprised at some of, um, the line items that stayed the same. Um, I'm sorry. Like, okay, street sweeping, it was only 1, 1,391 more. Um, stormwater, well, stormwater, that's different, that utility fund, cause that's separate, right? I mean, that's a separate one. But I was just surprised at some of that stuff because obviously, I mean, the cost of fuel, supplies, everything else has increased since pre-COVID and I just couldn't believe that it wouldn't be higher.
Well, absolutely, I mean, like, you know, cause in the assumptions I put together is, you know, you know, I kinda looked at wages and benefits, but a lot of the operating, I kept the same because, you know, I, I don't know what the activity levels are gonna be planned in the various accounts in 2023. I mean, the purpose of this is this kind of gives a snapshot of where we are, but obviously I anticipate that there's gonna be, there're gonna be changes in these accounts, you know, so I kinda just took the ones that I kinda knew as far as wages and benefits and just kinda made the assumption, okay, the operating expenses going forward, you know, are just gonna remain the same, but obviously, you know, you know, kinda we, we're hit with inflation, with fuel prices and things like that, that are gonna affect the budget going forward. But, you know, the purpose of the projection was to kinda just give us an idea of where we would be just based on these assumptions, you know, but obviously I expect changes, just like, you know, I expect changes in revenue assumptions, you know, when I start looking at, you know, investment earnings as the interest rate changes, you know, tho- that'll change. We don't have our state aids, you know, our transportation aids and things like that, you know, those will change. But, you know, really this was just me saying, okay, here's kind of just a general snapshot where we are to begin the discussion of, you know, and, and I think that the big, the big discussion is, is that the assumption assumes that we have no new borrowing, you know, and that's really.
Wait, I'm sorry. What? What did you say, the assumption is what? I missed it.
The, the 1.8 million dollar deficit that the project is, is basically with, with no new borrowing, you know, and that, you know, and that was kind of like one of the main reasons for the discussion and, you know, so.
Okay.
So obviously I expect a lot of these to change, you know, it's.
And that's what I just wanted you to say because I just don't want the general public council members to think that, you know, this, this, this is it. I mean, and you have, and I agree with both of you, um, when, I can't remember the gentleman's name from Ellers.
Phil.
I'm sorry?
Phil.
Phil, when he was here. I mean, no one wants to hear it, but, I mean, you have, you have to borrow to grow. Um, and like I said, if you guys all got this in your mail slots, read it. I mean, there's a lot of good information in there. I mean, there's how many municipalities that it says in here, I mean, that are the one guy, I mean, they're broke. I mean, and they've used, you know, not a transportation utility, which they do talk about that, but they've used wheel taxes, I mean, everyone's coming up, I mean, it's not just us, everywhere is getting less and less and less. So it's creative or if we're gonna cut, I don't want people to come in here and say, okay, I'm cutting 50,000 from the library. What, I wanna know what services you're going to tell them that you're going to cut. What services are you going to get rid of? If we're cutting 100,000 from public, public works, tell me, what are you gonna cut? I mean, what services? The roads are terrible, I mean, they just are. I mean, I mean, we don't, we don't have the money to keep up with them, just like many other places. But, you know, and, and when I talked about the Aquatic Center last year, I remember mayor, you said, you know, well, you just, like you said just now, cut the budget, you know, so, okay, so when they get the budget amount that we give them, it's like, okay, what can we fund with that? But the general public, when I, if I say, oh, we're gonna cut 50,000 from the Aquatic Center, people are going, oh my God, you know, that's your number one moneymaker, why, why would you do that? But there's, there's other ways that departments could, they could raise their rates, they could, you know, I mean, the water rates go up, sewer rates go up that they're paying, it's just, it's not so easy to say we're just cutting from the budget. And I know, Tim, you explained that last year. It's like, we really have to think, if you're, if you're cutting and, and being creative in other ways that we can do it, what services are you willing to give up? What, and I mean, in this article states it, many, one didn't fill 15 positions. I mean, it's a smaller municipality than us, but they have to cut services to its citizens. So figure out what's, what, what direction you wanna go, what services that you wanna start to decrease. So put that in your mind when you're, you know, when you're thinking about what you can do to decrease the budget. Thank you.
I guess also just so you know that the department heads have on their spreadsheets and they're working on the detailed budgets right now.
And it came just going to, you know, like, you know, what's not in here, it's like, actually we just received the new WRS contribution rates, you know, and so, you know, the general went up by 0.6%. Uh, police went up by 1.48% and fire went up by 1.98% on the contribution that the city has to do. And so when you, when you look at that, it's, you know, it's about, I calculated this afternoon and that's an additional 110,000 just for that, that, just that rate change right there. You know, and obviously, you know, we have health insurance rates that renew on July 1. Now, we've been very, very, very fortunate as a city that actually our health insurance rates over the past three years have been flat to declining.
Yep.
But, you know, everyone knows with health insurance, that can change. So, I mean, so there's a lot of things that, you know, especially being a, you know, where wage and benefits represent such a large percentage of our budget, it does have an effect. But I, I just wanted to point out that, that's some cost information that came in here, obviously not to the good side, but I was kinda anticipating that with, you know, with the market the way it is, that the actuaries come in and so they're gonna lower their estimated market returns and obviously that's gonna drive up the, the contribution rates in order to fund the benefits. So just wanted to point that out.
And one other thing, um, the HR meeting the other night when the chief was talking about the grant, was that the grant program that he wants to hire three new firefighters?
Yep.
Okay. Um, and just reading in some of this article and following some of these links as well, um, one problem as we all know right now. And just reading in some of this article and following some of these links as well, one problem, as we all know right now, people don't, we can't, you can't find staff to work. Okay. So you don't want that in police and fire, at least I don't. I want to call and I want someone to come. So I was very, very, very concerned when I was listening to that, when we're not following safety protocol because we don't have the staff to do it. And that's, I mean, we're not alone in that. So that's another thing is things coming up. And I don't know if that was projected because it wasn't approved as officially like in, in the budget yet. So, I mean, that, that would go up. I mean, you're not going to see that for three years. Was that what the grant was, three or five years? They pay for the first three years?
Right. So they're requesting six new firefighters, three as the first year that would be funded through the budget. And then they're requesting that they apply for a grant, you know, that the grant period opens up between January and February in there, that, and that would fund three firefighters for three year. And so, you know, they're, so they're proposing that grant would fund three and then the budget, you know, would fund the other three.
Okay. And, you know, and that's, I didn't mean to talk specifically about that, but I just wanted to know that, you know, that stuff's not in the budget. And, you know, and that's the thing is you start running low. I mean, you know, streets, I mean, I mean, they're a huge department doing different things. I mean, engineering's running thin right now. And I mean, we have them doing the transportation. I mean, you know, we're down a public works director, but I'm just, you know, we're trying to do more with less as it is. But it's like, how low do you go where people are getting burned out and they leave? I mean, police force, fire, you know, I mean, it's just, we really need to think of that as well. So, thank you.
And I think every department could easily come in here and argue for staffing, every one of them.
Patrick?
I don't know if you misspoke, but with the library, you can't tell them what services. That was discussed about twenty minutes ago. What we do is we give them the appropriation and then they decide on how to use it. So you can't tell them that they can't have one thing or another.
It's the same thing with the park rec, rec commission as well. So, right, water, light, fire, police, do we line item everything that they do?
Yeah.
So the only one we don't is the library.
Their own. So they have their own funding. But as for park and rec, please, those are all line item. So if, if the police department wants to buy brand new radios and there's no money for it, you can deny that request.
You know, as far as the library, yes, this governing body could say, well, you know what? You know, we feel that we're only going to give you this because we think that you don't need X, Y and Z. It's just that they don't have to listen to that advice. You know, once you give them the appropriation, they could spend it on anything they want. So, I mean, yeah, this governing body could make recommendations or say, we're cutting your appropriation. This is what we expect to be done with that reduction. But the library board makes that decision independently whether they want to follow that advice. Obviously, they're going to be conscious of, well, if we, you know, we kind of don't do what the council kind of wants or kind of reconcile those two things, what's going to happen in the next budget process? So, I mean, there is some checks and balances there, but ultimately, all the person's doing is right is once you give them the money, they can do whatever they want with it.
And what do, like town of Grand Rapids, I know the ones that have libraries already, they're the same as the city. Where the, where the libraries, like the village of Esper has a library, so they are exempt. So, but the others surrounding communities, they pay taxes for that library as well.
Right, the, the six hundred and, what did I say, ninety-two, forty-two thousand, that, that, yeah, that comes from the surroundings. So there is, you know, that's the one service, you know, that's, that outside the city, the taxpayers, you know, contribute towards it.
Right.
Now, I did an analysis, and this must have been ten, fifteen years ago, where it's like, if there's still, you know, even though they're paying something, city taxpayers still have a higher burden for, for your library.
But like you said before, that's going to happen when you have a city around town of Grand Rapids. I mean, it's no different than streets. They're driving our street, they live out and they come in and they use our streets, they're not paying for it. So it's the same thing and that would be a higher cost as well.
Especially since we're the economic hub of the region.
Right.
You know, obviously that, so.
It's just, it just is. That's just the way it is. So, thank you.
Okay. And I think that with what Mayor Blazer had said, that we have the department heads, and I think what they're looking from us for is direction on, on, we're not going to micromanage. But I think if we gave them some direction on where to go, I think that is probably going to suit us best here. And then if they decide not to do that, then we could dig further into it. So.
Are you saying like everyone cut one percent of your budget? Is that what you're referring to-ish?
Yeah, what I'm saying is, is we don't need to tell them what services they're going to cut. We have very well capable department heads in all the departments. And if we gave them direction, a general direction on what we would like to see, I think that would be more beneficial than telling them what you're going to cut the service or that service. They could, they could, we gave them a direction and they said, well, in order to do that, we would have to cut this service or that service, then we can have that discussion at that time.
But I think that's where the council's responsibility is deciding which services they're going to offer to the citizens by your constituents selecting you into that office and not the department heads.
I would disagree with that. I normally agree with everything you say, but this, the department heads know their departments and their budgets way more than any of us could know.
So if the public or public work superintendent decides we're going to cut the compost site, who's going to get the calls? It's you guys because you're the one determining whether or not we should have compost site or not. But, and I don't think it's fair for him to decide whether or not the citizens of Wisconsin Rapids need a compost site or not. I think that comes through the constituents, through the alderpersons and then deciding whether or not we're going to have compost site.
I agree, mayor. That's what we're represented to do.
Correct. And deciding on those services, staffing levels, you know, that's why staffing levels come to council, you know? Do we want to have a bigger police force or a bigger fire department? You know, those, those are the, we use it, the micro management of common council, and it's not micro managing. It's, it's, you know, listen to constituents, providing the services that we're going to provide in the city. And, you know, every city gets to decide those themselves, but I think that comes from the council. And then it's, then it's my obligation as the mayor to make sure that those services are being provided to the constituents through the council.
I was just going to say, getting back to, I think, along these same lines, it would behoove each of us, I know I'm going to. Especially, we talked about the library, like Patrick was just talking about how we really don't, once we appropriate a certain amount of money, we don't know what that goes to. I mean, we don't have control over it goes to. I just now today found out, I mean, I guess that's my fault. I didn't know how many employees were at the library. To me, it seems I don't understand why there's the certain number of employees at the library because I don't know enough about the library. So for me, I'm going to go down to the library and find out what each one of these employees does. And because I can't decide on, yes, I can decide as a, as a council member representing constituents, what part of that six hundred, above the minimum of three thirty-five to exempt taxpayers, what part of that? I can say, okay, this is a good investment because I don't know someone, I don't know a board's going to say, okay, but Dean's idea of what was a good investment, we think this is. So I want to go and learn. And I think in some of these services, so I agree with Patrick, yeah, we have some great department heads, but some of these things we don't really understand. And in terms of, yes, like you said, we don't know what they're doing. So I think that's our job to learn because we're responsible for the money. And so for the library, I mean, I'm going to figure out what the number of employees should be, whether I agree with the number or not, is there a limit at this point? But I don't know why, I really honestly don't know what they do, all of them. And so that's something I have to investigate on my own, and I think we all should at this point.
And I just want to say, I did, I have that all, that information, which I got from Tim last year, last fall, the number of employees, right, Tim? Yeah, I got that sheet.
I have the number and I have the number, I have the dollar number and I have the number of employees. I don't know how it's broken up. I know, I mean, I know there's some people that.
And they have their titles.
It's a, it's a pretty big number in my opinion. So, go ahead.
Yeah, and I'm going to go back to what I say at the beginning and Ryan can, you know, we're excited that we have a new library director. It's, you know, we've heard a lot of great things and I think we need to give her the opportunity and not kind of, you know, she's not even here yet. And here we're talking about cutting her budget. And I think we need to give her the opportunity to come in and, and look and evaluate the services that are being provided because of her experiences, and we may be pleasantly surprised.
Exactly. When does she start again? I'm sorry.
In August.
August, yeah.
I can't remember the date.
And every one of the council members sitting here tonight are more than welcome to come to any library board meeting. I've been on the board for a year and a half and sad to say, I haven't seen a single one of yous there. I would greatly appreciate you guys to come and spend some time. If you're truly considering potentially lowering the appropriation, you should get a gauge of what is actually happening over there. And I strongly encourage you guys to come, take a, take a sit in, ask some questions. There's lots of folks there that are willing to help and willing to explain. So you're more than welcome.
Matt? I think you're going to say something. I have a question on a different line, Tim. Could you tell me what the decrease of close to fifty thousand on the recreation department, is that Mary or what's, what is that?
Right. With the reorganization is that you had one and almost three quarters people there. Now you have one and point two.
Okay.
So as part of that reorganization.
Salary, that was HR, that's an HR.
That reflects those savings in that.
I assume so, I just wanted to make sure.
I just have another question too, Tim. For, I know, and that's a big thing on the park and rec commission, but I didn't have their minutes and I don't see that they met yet this month, but.
We're not meeting this month.
Okay, so the replacement reserves, so, and I know I've heard many members talk about a, some kind of a capital improvement plan with the water park. I mean, that's a huge facility, money wise, we're, we're paying on that dearly. And we have twenty thousand dollars in the budget for replacement items. So I can pretty much guess what would happen if some major pump or something went out. I mean, we're going to have to close the facility because we can't pay for it and we're paying on a park that couldn't be there. So I know that's the park and rec commission. But, I mean, that's a big, it's a big item for me. I mean, to continually only having twenty thousand dollars every year for that.
So and that's, you know, and I think that's common council is to really not park or rec commission. But it's really about, you know, we have to add money to that from where are we going to get the money for that? And so it's, that's what we're coming into the conundrum of, you know, you have to raise taxes to create these accounts or you have to reduce other line items to create those accounts. But, yeah, I agree with you, that's going to be, it's a serious concern that, you know, and that was to the fault at the time, it should have been discussed. That should have been part of the discussion on creating the facility is the long-term planning on funding replacements. Or, you know, I've, I've been talking to and we, with Jake is we need to have a backup pump. The problem is there, there's not any of the same pumps, they're all different. So if you're going to have a backup pump, you're going to have to have five or six different pumps because they didn't create it with one standard pump. And so that's a struggle we're kind of struggling with is how do we fund that then?
It just kind of really concerned me with one of the biggest moneymakers that we can actually make revenue.
It'll never make revenue.
Well, no.
It'll never even cover, come close to covering operations.
But there wasn't a capital improvement plan for that. I just, it just wows me.
Well, I mean, we, yeah, I mean, as far as in the, you know, the, the operational projections that the consultant provided, obviously, they're, they are what they are, you know. And we did, you know, we had to increase, I think, we went from like an eighty thousand dollar appropriation for mead pool to a hundred and thirty thousand for the, to levies for the subsidy. But, I mean, currently in the, the replacement fund, we have a hundred and forty-three thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars plus add another twenty thousand of that. So, but obviously, you know, depending on, you know, there's a lot of major stuff that down the road is, and it's just like with any of our facilities, you know, that's, that's one of the challenges that we have is that, you know, you have limited funds to put away for limited purposes. You know, we've, we've done a good job with our equipment that, you know, we've, we've built in and put away money for, for, for equipment over the years. You know, and Centralia Center, you know, we've tried to put away monies for that as far as improvements over there. A lot of that was spent on the new parking lot, about two hundred and fifty thousand. But if you see from the finance minutes, we got some rooftop units, you know, that are going to, you know, cost considerable amount of money that those are going to be expended for. You know, we try to put away for city hall, but, you know, with all these different needs, all these different buildings, you know, you have, when you have limited resources, you know, and, you know, obviously, you know, we're levy limits and things like that. So, and usually, you know, if you, if you notice in the projection, and I'll just give you, you know, I'm projecting, I just use the five-year average of net new construction. That figure will be coming out here pretty soon, you know. But when you just take the, the four-year average, and I took out the Talco because obviously that was a one-time kind of skewed everything, you know, you're looking at, you know, from under the levy limits, that based on new growth, you can raise your levy by a hundred and twenty-three thousand. If you just remember, I just said that our WRS rates just took a hundred and ten of that. And that's before looking at cost of living, any health insurance. So, I mean, I get it where it's like, yeah, you'd like to have these things fully funded, but at a lot of times is when you have X amount of resources and you have all the services that you provide, you know, it is difficult. And I remember years and years ago, you know, we established some of these funds for, for buildings and things, but over budget decisions, over time, you know, all of a sudden, it's like, well, nope, we need, we need this. So, you know, all of a sudden, it's, it's an easy thing to cut out of the budget, right? When you got something that you're planning for ten, fifteen years down the road as opposed to immediate need. So, and I mean, it is a challenge for us and, you know, and we're looking at and, you know, and also with, you know, with fees is like, yeah, I mean, you, you can charge increased fees, but there, you know, there's a, there's a point where the fees can become, you know, too high that either people aren't going to use the facility or they're just not going to use the compost sites or whatever, you know, however it is. But we're also, when it comes to fees, you know, we're also, you know, constricted by levy limits, you know? You could sit there and say, for example, it's like we could put garbage collection on a fee. Because I live, you know, Grand Rapids has a garbage collection fee. But under the levy limits, if we established a fee for garbage collection, the law says then you have to reduce your levy by that same exact amount. So you, you know, you don't really gain anything. So, you know, so that is one of the challenges that, you know, the city has with, you know, just inflationary expense pressure in the budget. But also, you know, when you look at when your state aids and your tax levy represent almost seventy percent of your funding of your, your general fund and your, your service that provide those services, and state aids are pretty much flat. You know, they, they don't go up very much at all. And when you have levy limits, that just shows you that, that, that pressures, not only on the expenditure side, but it's also on the revenue side. And, and with the state kind of restricting what types of fees you can create, but also, you know, let's face it, fee is a tax, right? You know, so it's just, you know, let's just be honest about that. So, so that is the challenge that we, we have, you know, throughout, you know, obviously now, you know, there are some opportunities with, you know, the ambulance revenue, with the new Medicare reimbursement rates, we've raised those rates. And hopefully with the new billing agency that we're using, we're hoping to see a little bit better collectibles, you know? The interest rate environment is improving, so I'm anticipating in here, you know, I did it very modest, but, you know, coming up, when I do the, the final budget projection or the final budget to present the council, you know, I see interest rates going up. And we have an investment portfolio where we, you know, kind of invest some of that long-term and things like that. So, you know, hopefully that'll pay dividends because, you know, I've seen it where we've had five hundred thousand dollars of interest and I've seen it your, one year we have seventy-five just because of the interest rates. I mean, I think the LGIP this year, early in the year was paying like fifteen basis points. It's, you know, but now it's up to, you know, a hundred basis points. So that's an opportunity. So, you know, every year, it's kind of a challenge of, you know, revenue, some go up, some go down. And, you know, it's just one of those things that we have to kind of reconcile and hopefully, you know, try to. hopefully, you know, try to maximize the revenues wherever possible, but also, you know, pay attention to our expenses and, you know, maybe we have, you know, kind of start looking at some of those and saying, you know, there are gonna be some stuff that, you know, maybe, you know, in previous years we were able to outlay for this, that we're gonna have to say, oh, we may have to put off for that, you know, and things like that. Because, you know, when we don't have a lot of growth in the community, you know, it, it does bind us, you know? And so, you know, you need that growth to a certain extent to kind of just fund just the inflationary cost to provide the same service that you did in the prior year.
Tim, and I just wanted to state again, sorry. If you all read this, it talks about the new growth, because people that don't understand budget, it's really, it was really informative for me, because you have to have new growth, so you, you have to borrow to grow, you know, and I mean, it's the same concept. One thing with the transportation utility, so that's the 350,000 to recoup special assessments. But because we started so late, that's not our free mon, I don't want to say free money, I don't mean it that way, but you know, our, our free money to replace that. But then, one other thing, and I know I looked back on all my materials and that, and, and I can't remember, but what is the adminis, what is, I'm sure Water and Light's charging us for administrative fee, but, because I thought at one time when we were early discussing that, is that the administrative fee was very high, so it's like, what? So we get the 350,000 for the special assessments, the money extra for the roads, but then, the way that calculation came out to the trip was that number, and I'm sorry, I don't remember it anymore. But then, what is the administrative fee part of that? I mean, are we, are we gonna get really what we think we're going to get out of that?
Well, I mean, yeah, obviously, I mean, the administrative fee could look at, and I quite remember, really the out of, you know, if it's administrative internally, you know, we, those are already budgeted dollars, okay? So, like, you know, so for like, kind of with our stormwater utility, you know, it's, you know, you know, engineering has some time just to kind of maintain the model and stuff, but, you know, if they charge a stormwater utility, well, they're not charging somewhere else. So, you know, those, those dollars, it's not an out-of-pocket dollars. Really out-of-pocket dollars is what Water and Light ends up, you know, billing us for they actually do the billing. And I think for the stormwater utility, I do believe it's like $14,000 a year and things like that. So I don't anticipate it to be that significant as far as the out-of-pocket, you know? You know, and then as far as like, also, you know, you have to remember too is, is that, you know, that 350 is replacing special assessments, but it's really replacing future special assessments, right? So we're not gonna specially assess, but we still have the existing ones and that revenue is gonna continue to come in. You know, one of the things we've talked internally is, is like, taking that revenue and putting it into the mill and overlay in addition, so it'll really kind of, and then eventually that money will, as, as the installments are paid off, will disappear, but, you know, we'll have that extra revenue coming in and it's really, you know, looking at, it's like, you know, maybe one of the ideas is putting a mill or overlay, but it could go into anything that this governing body wanted it to also.
And I remember those charts that you made that were really, with the transportation utility, how it kind of showed that, so I remember that, but thank you.
Patrick, did you have?
Okay, yeah. Just to go back to this, for me, I think it would be best to leave it up to the department heads. I don't know if Mr. Kearns or Mr. Baller wants to talk about their departments, if they would rather have us decide a line item by line item or give them a general guidance, but I think that would be, they know their departments way better than we ever will. We could spend years going to the library, going to engineering, going to the streets department and learning all this that they already know. And I think if we just had some general guidelines for them, that they would know where to make the cuts. Because if we do it, I might take something out that nobody likes. Or if Sherry does it, she might take out something that nobody likes. Like, we already, they know their departments way better than, than we know their departments. So I'm, I would just go back to leaving it up to the department heads. If any of them wants to speak, I would appreciate their input on it, if they would want us to cut line item by line item or if they would just like a general direction on where to go.
So I think we go back to what Sherry said initially is that, you know, we can go through and we can cut out training and you're, honestly, it's nickels and dimes. You know, the big cuts are gonna come from choosing a service that we no longer want to, want to offer, and, and the largest cost to us are our staff. And, and that's where you're gonna get the big cuts you need to cut. But we can go through and we can, because this isn't, this isn't the first time it's happened, as Jake kind of scoots up to the microphone, you know, cuts have been happening for many years. He can talk about street department, how they're half the size that they once were, and they, and previous councils and mayors have, through attrition, just not filled positions. And so the, this isn't the first time that we're looking at trying to reduce spending. This has been going on for many years, but, but the biggest carrying cost is everybody knows is staff. And so, and that staff is associated with, with certain, you know, certain jobs and, and that's where I think Patrick and I disagree is that, you know, you have to decide what services you don't want to apply, have, and, and then the staffing associated with that, what Sherry said right at the onset of this. But yeah, I think staff can go through and they can find pieces here and there, but really it's gonna be nickels and dimes by the time you're done.
And I don't think they would have put it in the budget if it wasn't necessary. I mean, they know, I mean, times are thin, so, but Paul, did you want to speak?
And Kyle also is here, you know, and I think he's more here, and I won't speak for Kyle, but to what you said, Sherry, about how economic development is such a vital role in, in this community and, and trying to, you know, bolster that and have effort into trying to grow that to help our base. And I think Kyle, is part of the reason why Kyle's here, if that, if that was needed to be spoken to, but sorry, go ahead, Paul.
So Alderman person Delaney, I've had the privilege of doing the budget for the street department for five years, the last year as a supervisor before Jim Borsky retired. And for those five years, except for three years ago, our budget has been flat, except for our 3% pay increases or our 2% pay increases, whatever we get. And, so like I said, in 2019, or sorry, probably 2020, I apologize, was the first year that I put the $100,000 in for our mill and fill program. Otherwise, last year, or this, for this current year, because of our new contract with waste management, we have an increase in our street sweeping because we now have to pay to get rid of our street sweepings. Where before we had a reciprocal agreement where we would take it to the hill for their, for them to have daily coverage, and then we would provide them with road building materials or whatever within their, you know, kind of a, we give you this, you give us, get this type thing. So it was a cost benefit for both of us, but now, because of the new ownership, the, with waste management, they're choosing just to have all of those dollars right up front. So that's really, you know, the increased cost of materials. For instance, this year, it was budgeted to try to chip seal 180,000 square yards. Because of the price increase of oil and things like that, we're gonna do 150,000. You know, so we're short, you know? I, I know what Sherry was saying, but I take, I take that personally, that our roads are terrible, because I, I know what you're saying, I didn't, I don't take it personally, but, you know, going to other towns, we have kids that are in athletics, you know? Yeah, there are sections of it that are bad, but guess what? The sections that we are having problems with are stuff that are, the State Department of Transportation is not allowing us to do maintenance on, you know? Because they tell us we have to do maintenance, but yet we can't do it because they won't enumerate a project, you know? So, to your, to your comment of, you know, do I know my department? Yeah, I, I know it. You know, and my guys bust their tail 12 months out of the year and I don't think anybody is saying that we don't, but it's, there isn't much, the, the budget where you would cut is purchasing of materials for us to do our jobs. So we're, you know, we're actively looking at things, working with the wastewater treatment plant and trying to do proactive maintenance with our catch basin instead of reactive maintenance. You know, it's, it's a process. One of the things that, that, you know, the 14 years that I've been here, you know, we never, for the first probably, what would you say, Tim, nine, eight years? We didn't have a five-year plan of what street maintenance we were gonna do. We were literally making a decision the year before, based off of the condition of the street, and then all of a sudden halfway through the summer, sanitary mains would start to fail and, oh, we're gonna do that project next year. You know, now the waste ma, or, you know, predecessors have started putting stuff in place where we're televising all of the existing sanitary main, making decisions based on the conditions of our underground facilities rather than our surfaces, you know? And working with Water and Light to make sure that their needs, so that our brand-new roads don't get all cut to crap because, oh, you know, we just did this, well, the water main is 110 years old or whatever, you know? So it would be hard to, you know, whatever, if you tell us we gotta come up with 1%, we'll try our damnedest to do it, you know? But there's, there's not much there to cut as it is, you know, so.
So what would you rather have? The general guidance of cutting 1% or telling you to stop doing street sweeping?
I could go with either one. The problem of it is the street sweeping is regulated by the DNR. You know, I mean, we're required to, we're required to sweep streets, we're required to clean catch basins, you know, compo, or our, our compo sites, if we, that's part of our recycling program, so, yeah, we can cut back, I mean, it's, you, you cut, you cut stuff with composting, then all of a sudden our grant that we get for our recycling grant may be reduced or whatever, you know? I mean, but there's certain things that were, that were funded that we have to do type thing, you know?
Exactly, and you know what those are.
Yep.
So, and we don't know. The street sweeping, that's a perfect example. I have no idea that it had to be done, so, I mean, I think a general guidance would be better.
I guess it, I guess it could be twofold, you know? If, if the general guidance is, is 1%, you know, just, just like that, if you come to me and say, Paul, I think you should cut street sweeping, I'll give you, say, okay, we gotta go from this state to this state, this is what our cost is, you know, whatever, and maybe there is something there that we can cut, you know? But again, that's from the stormwater, street sweeping is out of the stormwater management, so that doesn't really help us where we're trying to find funds, you know? But again, it's, you know, kind of to what Alderman Austin said, I'd be more than happy to sit down, you know, I, I feel that I have one of the most difficult budgets in the city because it takes me forever and a day, but Tim, you know, and Jim put together Excel spreadsheets 10 year, or five years ago, six years ago, and I still use those same sheets. We do all activity-based budgeting based off of how long it takes us to do things and everything like that, so it's, it's pretty in-depth. Every year I end up with a two-inch, three-ring binder that it's pretty much every single penny is there, you know, so.
Thank you, thanks a lot. I appreciate that.
Matt? Ray?
Thanks. So first of all, I, I do, I agree with the mayor and I believe it was Sherry's comment that if we're gonna make cuts and, and it's gonna affect services, I believe that's our responsibility to decide which, which of those services are gonna be affected by this. Just a couple of things, and they've probably all been said 10 times, but wages are up 3% this year, Tim could probably tell you what that comes out to dollars. Fuel has doubled, we just looked at rooftop units for the senior center that in, what, six months have gone up $100,000. Equipment expenses, if you can get them, if you can get the equipment, they keep going up and up, and we're talking about cuts. I think what I would like to hear Kyle talk about maybe is a little bit of growth, and I think what we should be asking our department heads for is responsible budgets, like the library, the street department, ask for responsible budgets. You've said it 10 times, Patrick, they know the budget better than we do. So just ask for responsible budgets, but if you go in and start demanding percentage across the board pay cuts, I think we're gonna, or cuts, we're setting ourselves up for trouble, I believe that. Thank you.
Very interesting conversation. My, my response with regards to budgets is a little bit different than Paul's, considering that we've got one of the smaller budgets in community development. And we're more unique in that the services we provide, whether it's code enforcement, planning and zoning, site plan review, building inspection services, economic development, are more so tied to individuals. So if we're to get rid of code enforcement, you know, that, that means cutting a position. Same with our inspectors, and that's more difficult to do because we're a delegated municipality by the state, so we would have to walk back our delegation from inspection standpoint, rely on the state to assist with our inspections, which means that our timeline for inspecting projects is going to slow way, way down and it doesn't give us flexibility to grow as a city. So I think there, you know, if we're to nickel and dime our budget in community development, it would mean looking at cutting out things like education or, you know, other proactive, like we have some money set aside to demolish buildings, we haven't utilized it in a while, but if there's an old dilapidated house, we have a line item in there that, that we've budgeted, I think 20 or 30,000 in the past couple of years. But since, I think, 2019, we haven't, we haven't utilized it. So that, that's what we would be looking at in our budget to slim it down, but again, in, in the comparison, you know, if you guys are looking to cut 2 million in our budget to narrow or to take out, you know, $50,000 worth in our small 800,000, $900,000 budget in community development, isn't much in the grand scheme of things. So while it can be done, and we'll, we'll accommodate and adjust depending on, upon what either the, the mayor directs or council directs, I don't know how much of an impact it would have on a smaller department like us, it might be a little more harder for us to do it because again, it's not as easy for us to stop our services, again, code enforcement, building inspection, things of that nature. To answer questions about growth, you know, I think that's why you've seen communities across the state of Wisconsin put a lot of effort in economic development, because they recognize that if you're growing your sense of place, if you're growing your workforce, if you're growing your community, your housing stock, you're attracting additional workforce, you're growing additional industries, which means then you can also expand your services and grow your budgets as well. And so I think that was the part of the goal in some of the steps we took in our office to have more of a associate planner to handle some of the planning activities, which would free up my, my duties to focus more on economic development and to sparks of development. Unfortunately, we had a, a health pandemic that really flatlined commercial growth. We still saw growth in, in residences, but because people were home, so they put money in their homes, which is good. Now we're starting to see the, the commercial growth kick back up. Unfortunately, I don't think we've seen industry growth occur. I think it's more so been related to services, you know, office-type, retail-type uses rather than, you know, the, the Metalco, the, the larger industries. But we're, you know, we're placing priority on trying to fill some of our last remaining sites in our industrial parks to pursue downtown redevelopment. And again, it's, it's pretty crucial for me and a high priority for me because I know if we can inject more value into our downtown or any of our industrial parks, right, that, that creates more tax base, it allows us to be a little bit more active, especially in our TIF districts, if, if we haven't met the expenditure period in those, if we're creating new value from an increment standpoint. So I guess that's the summary of our office and how we prioritize and how important growth is to the community, and I'd be happy to answer any other questions which you may have.
Go. Go ahead.
So this is kind of what I've learned this, tonight. So as far as I understand, like, we're talking about the cuts, but for a minute, let's talk about, I guess, the growth. You're, you're, Tim, what you're saying is the state set levy limits, so we don't have an option in terms of. an option in terms of being able to raise taxes, not that we wanna do that anyways, but we're limited or our hands are tied in terms of being able to make more money off of levy, correct?
Right. I mean, as far as levy limit calculation, but if you notice, and I point this out in previous years, is that we do have some capacity built in to the levy limits because we don't take the full exemption for our debt service. So, there is some capacity in there, and every year I, I point that out, you know, as far as this is what, based on the calculation, you know, based on net new construction and then adding in what the increase or decrease in our debt service is this, but we do have some capacity in that we don't take that full debt service exemption, so.
But, and also, Tim and I have discussed with the assessor, you know, he, he approached us about a revaluation and, you know, trying to capture the new home values and those type of things, and we, we told him that it had to be done through a budget discussion time, but, and that's an opportunity to raise revenue, but, you know, I don't think it, to me, I, I don't, go ahead. I don't think.
I mean, that's the, that's the misnomer about reassessments. It doesn't raise additional revenue because you have levy limits, right? So your, your levy can only be this. What a reassessment is, is a redistribution of those taxes based on classes of property and how much they go up from the average. So if you, so take residential properties, if, you know, and there's different classes of residential property. So, you know, if the average residential property increase is, is ten percent, but you're in a class of property residential that went up fifteen, obviously you're gonna get more allocated based on, you know, of that assessed value of the, of the tax levy because of that, or if you're below, you'll actually see your taxes go down. So, you know, that's one of the misnomers about reassessments because people get their notice like, oh, my assessment go up, well, oh, my taxes are go up. Well, not necessarily, yes and no, because theoretically when you do a reassessment and it goes up, your base goes up, but if you're taking the levy, the same levy and dividing into it, your rate will come down. So, you know, that's, that's always the difficult part about reassessments because it affects different classes of property differently, and that's why I say it's a redistribution of your tax levy, so to speak.
Okay, so when I, when we, we keep talking about, Sherry, you had said if, to, in order to grow, we have to take out debt, and I, I, I'm not sure when that started, and I don't know if it's really, again, I know a lot of people do it, and I'm not judging it one way or the other, but I, I don't necessarily feel like that's the best way for anybody to do it. I think it's better to save up the money unless that debt is making money, and I can understand it, but I don't, and I, and I guess we could justify this by saying, well, if, if we take out, you know, whatever we took out, fourteen million dollars to, to pretty up the riverbank and, and put in a park, that's never gonna make money, is what I heard tonight. So we have a really expensive park that we couldn't afford to begin with, that we can't afford to upkeep on, and the amount of money we're making off of it is insignificant. Is that kinda the gist of that? I mean, I, I'm glad that people are having fun, and, and, and I guess the big part of that is maybe some more people will move into the community and maybe they'll build a house and then we can charge taxes to that house, and then that would be the growth. Because really, the only growth I see for the community then is, because we can't do it through levies, the state won't let us, we can't do it through being a for-profit. I mean, we have some things we can charge, you know, the, the, the compost site and, you know, small things like that, but they're not gonna, like you said, it's nickels and dimes, right? So, so really, when you're talking about the growth of a city, we're talking about what? Tax, taxes, or, like, growing more people, right? More houses, more construction.
More businesses.
More businesses. That's what we're talking about it, when we're talking about growth, but that's not an easy thing to understand, and I, and I don't necessarily agree with, I know I've heard this, and I usually hear it from govern, people that work inside the government, that say, a government has to grow every year. It has to grow, and I'm, I don't, I guess I don't, maybe because I'm not in it, or maybe I didn't read the same books or follow the same principles, but I don't believe that something has to grow every year in order to survive. I think the smart entity, organization, whatever it is, knows how to shrink and then get creative about how they're gonna grow again. But if we don't get ourselves in a position to shrink with this, we don't know what's going on with the, this is what gave us life to begin with, so. Again, I'm, it, it's hard because nobody wants to have these conversations, but the reality is, we, we have to figure out how to shrink without hurting ourselves, without create, you know, I, I know the big thing is who are we gonna fire and what, what are you gonna cut? I mean, I know that's the, I don't wanna say fear tactics, but it's the fear that's driven into it, but I still feel like there's, if we, if we don't, if we don't look at it and say we have to do something, we have to figure out how to get creative, and we don't do anything, and we just kinda keep growing, and the only way we can afford to grow is by debt, then we're gonna be in big trouble. And I guess I could be proven wrong in the next couple of years as we start paying off debt, but if our main way of growing is debt, we're gonna have some fundamental problems that are coming our way. So, to me, that's why we're having the conversation. I, I get what you're saying, like, we don't wanna tell these guys that are ready, ready living on according to everybody shoestring budgets, that's what everybody's living on. So then we don't cut anything, we don't get rid of any services because we love the compo site, right? We, we wanna have a place to dump our stuff and keep our city pretty because what are we gonna do with it if we don't have compo site, right? So, so we have to be able to do this stuff. Whether it's, whether it's me going, you know, like we're saying, like, going into each department, if we can find the time and go through, show me exactly what you're doing, line item by line item of what this matches up to physically when I go to your department. I mean, I guess we can try to find time to do that, but I don't think, I, I saw a video when I first started here, that, that's, that's when you get yourself in trouble, as far as I understand, when you start getting involved in the people, the day-to-day activities. I mean, our, our, our job is to talk about the hard stuff, and I know it ticks people off, and I understand that, but you still have to have the conversations and figure it out. And if what we're saying, what I'm hearing, this is what I'm learning, is we have no wiggle room to cut anything, so we can't shrink at all, and we have to grow, but we can't really grow because in order to grow, we need more people, more businesses, but that's kind of a, you know, that's a out-there kinda thing. That doesn't happen overnight. I know I talk a bunch of stuff about entrepreneurial spirit and all that stuff, and I, I do agree that for a small community, that's what you have to strive for, but it doesn't just come overnight, and it takes a, a strong, you know, program to really kinda build that up and change directions from a mill town to, to what we're gonna be next. So, so I guess, you know, maybe I'm just blathering a little bit here, I apologize for that, but I guess the big thing is we gotta have these tough conversations, and we have to be able to figure out something to be able to move because that's not the answer to the future of our community. Thank you.
Tim?
You know, when you, you talk of debt, you know, as far as, are you talking for street construction?
It seems like we're talking about.
Because that's what's structurally built into the budget, let's be honest.
Yeah.
That's what we're really talking about. We're not talking about some project five years down the road that, that independent decision we made audits, where it really comes down to annually funding the budget. We're talking about street construction, you know, what we borrow for street construction because, you know, for budgetary purposes, that's considered a, a revenue to fund that project. You know, and I just, you know, and, and, and I understand, I understand, we've had these conversations in the past at this, at this level, you know, I've been here for a while, and, you know, we've looked at different opportunities to, you know, not borrow, and then the decision was made that, nope, this is, you know, this is the, the model we're gonna do, but I just wanna kinda, when you say about debt, you know, you know, and I always kinda put this together and I project out, you know, and if we were just to borrow just for street construction, you know, like one point six five million dollars a year for street, that would be funded in the budget, you know, you know, annually, right now, we're at twenty-eight million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand. Now, as we pay off the debt for streets and incur additional debt, this is the projection, you know, assuming that we borrow the same for streets going forward and then pay off all the, you know, the existing special project-type debt, you know, over time, your debt's gonna go down, even if you borrow for streets. So right now, we're at twenty-eight million, two-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand, you know, in eight years, we'd be at fifteen million, you know, and, you know, in twenty years, we'd be at eight million. So, you know, I'm, I'm not just trying to say, because I, I understand the whole debt argument, and I understand, you know, that, you know, why borrow if you don't have to? But what I'm saying is, is that borrowing for streets on an annual basis isn't really putting us into a financial hardship. I mean, I, you know, yes, do the, does it get put onto debt service tax levy? Absolutely. But also remember that that principal portion is the same as if you were to levy that directly, correct? So really what we're looking at is the amount, the interest that you pay on the debt is the additional cost to the taxpayer by borrowing. You know, because the principal, if we were to levy for the project straight out, that's what your principal payments are, correct? So, I, I just wanted to point that out, that, you know, you, you know, even if we were to borrow that, that, you know, it's not like our debt's gonna keep escalating, and in fact, if we just borrow for streets, it's gonna, it's gonna be coming down. Because, and that's what I said before, what's really taking our debt up is the special projects, and there's nothing wrong with those special projects, and I'm not saying you're not gonna have special projects in the future. I'm just saying that, you know, when we're looking at the budget and how we fund the budget and that streets are, you know, issuing debt for streets in a budget annual basis, you know, that's the reality of what that represents as far as, you know, the financial picture.
So when we talk about capital improvements, do we? In the end, even if we were to work really hard for the next, you know, six years and we were able to, eight years, knock down a bunch of the debt, put us in a, a more comfortable position. Really, the way government is designed is the, the, you can't restrict another governing body from saying, hey, let's, let's build another park on the other side, you know, another water park for fifteen million or twenty or whatever it's gonna be at that time. So, so we can work really, really hard to get ourselves out of the situation we're in. Is there any, so we're working on a capital improvements, a plan for years down the road, and I think that's phenomenal, and I wish, in the end, we would've done a long time ago so that, and again, I know we can't save all the money for everything, but certainly knowing that when the fire department comes and asks for a new building or a half a new building, you know, for this much money, that money was already there because we knew in our, the back of our minds as a community that we were gonna have to upgrade the fire station. We weren't really thinking about that so much, it seems like, in the past, in order to, you know, because then all of a sudden they come and we say, okay, we have streets for one point seven million, but now we got the fire department for two point seven million, and then we have this over here for another five hundred thousand, we'll just throw that on there.
Yeah, and, and we did have some of those building accounts, but obviously from, you know, over the years, you know, budget priorities change. You know, you can have the best laid plan today, five years from now, different priorities and things like that, you know. And not to say that that stuff wasn't thinking, yet we did, but, you know, like I said, priorities change, and plus, you know, and, you know, you have to think of, it's like, you know, every budget, there's, you know, as you, as you're seeing, you know, you have tight budgets and there's not a lot of wiggle room, you know, there's, there's always competition, you know, and so if you were to put a hundred and fifty thousand dollars away for a building in twenty years, and you're looking at doing a street project or maintenance or buying a piece of equipment now, you know, you know, those are those challenges that every year because, you know, I still say, you still have fixed resources as far as this is the amount of money you have, and so, yeah, it, it's, it's, it's nice to have those plans, and we've done it with a lot of our equipment, we've done it with some of our building needs, but, you know, it, it's very, very challenging to sit there and say, we're gonna put aside dollars for every single building need that we're gonna have in the future, or, you know, equipment in the future, or, you know, you know, I mean, it's just, it's just very hard to do because of the competing resources, because not only, you know, are you putting away for the future and for future outlay, but you have these pressures from just maintaining your operations in the service level, you know, from, from wage and benefit, material costs, fuel costs and things like that. So, you know, you know, I think, yeah, I mean, putting that out, you know, we have capital improvement plans for like equipment and lists of projects. When I talk about capital improvements, it's like really bringing that all together so we can really get a snapshot and prioritize and really looking at not only what our needs are, but then looking, okay, how are we gonna fund this? And things like that. But, you know, I'll tell you, on the funding level, it's gonna be very difficult because, you know, like I said, you know, when you, when you're struggling just to find, you know, year-over-year incremental revenues to fund those incremental expense increases, it's challenging.
I just wanna say, I, I do think it's great even for continuity for our community after we're all gone and you're all, you know.
Yep.
It still has that plan in place.
And, you know, the other thing that the capital improvement does is kinda, I don't wanna say, but it's, it, it protects, you know, the integrity of it, so like, like say, if you have a capital improvement plan, all of a sudden someone say, I want this. Well then, you know, in that process, you have where, okay, you gotta go and amend the capital improvement plan. It's not just like, we're gonna go do this project. It's like going in and saying, okay, if we're gonna do this new project, and it might be a priority, you know, because there's gonna be things in there that you're, you're gonna have like, you know, all of a sudden a new development comes, and you're like, hey, wait, that's priority, you know, but you amend the project and you say, okay, now what, if we're gonna do this new project, what aren't we gonna do? That, for that year. And, you know, and so it, it helps you in that, you know, because I always say, in a vacuum, everything, you know, seems to be a priority, right? Seems to be good. You take it out of the vacuum, compare it to other priorities, and it's like, well, maybe it's not as important as this, so, and I think that's a healthy analysis to go through, is it's not just looking at something on an agenda in a vacuum, it's looking at where's it fit in with all our other priorities, and that's why I think it's such a need that we have that for, from all classes of types of capital improvements, from equipment to buildings, the, the infrastructure and even things beyond that.
So if we put a parameter on that says we can only take out five hundred thousand dollars to go towards roads, to add to our other five hundred thousand dollars from the specialty utilities, transportation utility, gives us a million dollars for roads. In the end, if we have to spend, that we're only doing a million dollars on roads, that's like half of what we really wanna do every year. So I'm just laying out the options. We're either doing half of what we wanna do, or you're, or to fund the other million, we'd have to take it out of that money that you're talking about in order to do, we're gonna do that special project versus other capital improvements.
Right, yeah, I mean, if you said that, you know, yeah, I mean, that they come from, you know, whatever that, you know, whenever you, you sit there and say, if we're only gonna do this amount of borrowing for this, yeah, obviously then it's like, okay, you know, when you get down, there's, there's gonna be a budget deficit. Now it's gonna be like, okay, how do you, how do you balance the budget at that point?
So it's gonna come down to if the council wants to, if the majority want to take out debt to fund the roads and whatever else comes along before we take out the debt, or to cut the, you know, to have to, as you're saying, Shane, make the tough decisions, we're gonna have to make the call and say, I, I'm not, I'm still not gonna go into their departments, anyone's department, so you guys can relax. We're not gonna come over there and, and try to figure out and learn more about your department than you know. You, you, you gotta come to us and say, these are the things that we can cut, and this is the money it'll save us, and those are the decisions we're gonna have to make and take the repercussions for it, or we take out the debt, is what I'm understanding, is the crossroads we're at.
But, I think one of the, one of the things too, and you had mentioned, you had broken down the percentages of the debt. I mean, Alderman Rayom's not here, but other than Alderman Rayom, these two big numbers besides what we're borrowing for, the East Bank, none of us were on this council, so other than Shane and, and Mr. Rayom, and so all of us are looking at this debt, I know somebody said it's been going on for a while. Were you on? No, no, I didn't think so. We all came at the same time, right?
You know, and, and, you know, I, I just.
And so we're looking, but I'm saying, we're looking at this like, this is new that we're doing. No, and we have these other two, um, two elephants in the room that are restricting our ability to handle the day-to-day business like a street.
Right, well, I mean, yeah, I mean, and, and the only reason I'm pointing that out, I mean, I don't mean to sit there and say, you know, oh, you know, the aquatics in the East River Bank that, you know, I'm, I'm just saying, it's like when we're really, you know, because it's like when you talk about, okay, we have twenty-eight million dollars in outstanding debt, I'm, you know, and we're really talking about, we don't wanna borrow anymore, is it more of our debt levels are too high? Or is it that you just, you know, and that's why I bring out the, you know, what is portioned to street, because that's what we're really talking about in this budget projection, is what we're using, utilizing for streets. So that's the only reason. I don't, I don't, I don't wanna be misconstrued as saying, I'm like, oh yeah, we're driving up our debt as, you know, we shouldn't have done the aquatics or the East River Bank. I'm just saying, the reason why our debt has escalated over the past, because the, the city chose to do these, to do these projects, and, you know, and add those assets to the community.
Well, and that's kinda what I, that's kinda what I was getting at, is that it's eas, I mean, not easy, but it's explainable, or, to have the conversation that we're borrowing for the, the beautiful pool that we have, the beautiful East River, but then to go out to, like, we're also borrowing to put, fix the freaking potholes, excuse me, but that's a harder conversation to have with people. And so, but we are hampered by that, if you're looking at the overall debt. We're hampered by that amount of those two projects. If you're looking at the overall debt, we're hampered by that amount of those two projects that, quite frankly, are great for the community. And that's, and none of us have the discussion whether those are going away or not. Those aren't an option. That, we have to service that debt. Patrick?
The reason that you say that it's for the streets and roads and stuff like that is because that's like the thing that we can take a loan out for. We can't take a loan out for $2 million to fund our local library. That's not allowed, right?
No, we could.
And that would be...
But, yeah, I mean, you could basically borrow for any public purpose if you issue notes and things like that. But typically, you don't borrow for operations. You know, we borrow for streets because those are capital, construction of capital asset. So, and that's why we borrow for streets. Even though our own city crews do the work, it would be no different if we didn't have the city crews doing the work. We contracted it out, that, that's what we're borrowing for is the capital asset. You know, I would never, you know, recommend borrowing for operations because, you know, you just typically don't do that. That's what the levy is for, and, you know, in your other operations. So, you know, that's why it's always dedicated streets because it's the, you know, it's the construction of a capital assets, plus then, you know, your rating agency, Moody's, would sit there and say, anytime anyone's borrowing for operations, that's kind of a red flag.
Yeah, but you're paying for all that other stuff.
Right.
And the streets fall down to the last, and then you say, well, we're borrowing for the streets.
Well, yeah, I mean, you, I know what you're saying, and you could sit there and say, well, if it's this or that, but it's still, but it's still part of the funding of the entire budget.
Thanks.
Anything else? Renner?
I guess my final question will be then, as we, as I come, as we start talking with the department heads, you know, you want us to obviously make sure they put together a responsible budget, which I think they have in the previous years, and see where we end up? Okay.
Yeah, and I just, again, I just like the fact that we're getting to jump on it a little earlier. So, then, where we end up is, we can start talking about it earlier.
And, you know, yeah.
Without seeing this particular item or that particular item. Go ahead.
You know, and I think, you know, we'll encourage department heads to watch the meeting, so they kinda get a, you know, a sense of what we're talking about, and I think it'll be good for them, and that, you know, you know, as they prepare their budgets, you know, be prepared, you know, they're, you know, that, you know, when we talk about responsible budget, and I'm not saying that we don't already do responsible budgets, but I think it's, you know, there's a, there's a little bit, you know, thing to be learned from this discussion. I think it was a very healthy discussion. I think it's a good discussion for the public to see, and, you know, and I think that, you know, this is just the start of the process. So, I mean, that's the good thing, right? And so, and I also add, it's like, if there's any information you want or I can provide, please, you know, reach out to me. I'm more than happy to put, you know, crunch some numbers or put some stuff together if you're kind of interested in certain things. And, you know, I encourage older persons to do that. I don't mind.
And on top of that, please contact any department head if you have any question, because they'll be more than happy to help explain anything in their budgets.
I don't think this is gonna be popular, but the money that we have is that we continuously take out in debt. It's only a small percentage of our total budget. So, I mean, if there was a way, I would be happy if we could keep everybody the same as last year. Like, that would essentially be a cut.
Right, I know what you're saying, yeah. Flat budgets, same.
We could have a freeze for a year or two, and then that would, I would think, help us catch up. Is that correct?
Well, yeah, I mean, obviously, I mean, as you can see there with the, you know, I kinda calculated, and that's just based on just wages and benefits, and we still don't have health insurance rates and, you know, and things like that. So, yeah, I mean, I mean, obviously, if you held budgets flat, obviously, that would, you know, that in a sense is a cut if you have like cost of living adjustments and things like that. And obviously, I think all materials and things are going up, so, you know. I mean, that is an option if the council wished to give, give that guidance to departments, but, you know, you know, the, you know, I'll just say this, I was gonna say this before, but I guess I'll say it now, you know. And, you know, one of the things, you know, the problems with is across the board, whether it's a cut or anything, all budgets are different. You know, some budgets may have more discretionary spending than a different department, or they might have a line item in there that isn't necessarily their department or their department, but it's more for, you know, the organization as a whole and things like that. So, you know, that's another thing to be kinda conscious of, is that when you do across-the-board cuts, all budgets are different, and some budgets, some budgets have more discretionary spending. I'm not saying it's wasteful spending. I'm just saying it's more discretionary, maybe not, doesn't quite affect their operations like, you know, cuts in a different department. So, you know, that's the thing, you always gotta be kinda, and there's some things, like, in a budget, you just can't cut, you know. It's like, I have to have a financial audit each year. I don't have the option of like just saying, no, we're not gonna do one this year. And I don't think, you know, the SEC wouldn't like it, and I don't, you know, and I think, and also, I think that, you know, the council likes that we have a financial audit, you know, because it's some security that, you know, things are. So, you know, just keep that in mind because not all budgets are the same.
I'd just like to add, sorry, one quick comment to, you know, instead of just always negative, cutting, 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 are there ways that we can raise revenue? You know, I would like departments to think, I mean, some don't, but are there creative ways that they could raise revenue of some sort? So, I'd like that conversation had as well. Thank you.
Yep. Just, my last words would be, you know, if I set, if I set my budget, whether it's home or work or whatever, and said, okay, we know we're gonna take out $2 million minimum for roads in debt, we're gonna do it. In order to justify that, we gotta spend everything else. And I'm not, you know, I'm not saying like that's the thought process that goes into it, but certainly, that would change the way I viewed my ability to come in with, within the $42 million budget if, if I knew in the back of my head that we already agreed from the onset that we were gonna take out $2 million anyways. So, and in order to justify that, we gotta make sure the rest is spent. Just a thought. Thank you.
I just wanna say, again, thank you, Tim, for pretty awesome info tonight. And also, I just wanna say, one thing that, talk about doing the hard stuff, we have some really fantastic services in this city. And it's tough to talk about this stuff, and it's, there's, you can talk to some, one constituent, oh, my property taxes are not gonna go up this year, or this and that, but then all of a sudden, we're not doing the fantastic storm cleanup. I just got one of the few people that was damaged by the storm. But, but some of the services that we have, and I, super kudos to that area and Paul, and appreciate it. And other people had the same thing, but I'm just saying, there's an awful lot of services that we have in this community that we, I don't take for granted, and it's tough to, you know, to, again, use that term one last time, micromanage that. But those services come from somewhere, but we just have to find that fine line and, like Pat said, or Matt said, excuse me, that, you know, maybe they're somewhere else, maybe that, but, and Sherry, maybe there are options to generate revenue in some ways, maybe do something a little different at the pool, something to that effect. But I just wanna continue to give a good, as kudos when they're due, the services here are phenomenal for the size of the city. So, appreciate that. Anybody else? Got a motion to adjourn from Jay, and we have a second. Second, all in favor, say aye. Thanks, everybody.